And you have Brad for Keith.
Ah, okay, well, and we, as customary, start with public comments. In our presence is Rich Brand. Did you have a public comment for this morning?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to ask about the change of time to the select board meeting. I wasn't at the previous meeting where it sounds like you decided to meet. Will this be a continuing practice to meet at ten?
We hope so.
Okay.
If nothing nefarious.
Okay.
We thought that a little bit later start time might be beneficial to all of us.
Okay, alright.
We're all getting older.
Okay, and I will just say that it's not as convenient a time for me because I have a class that goes ten to noon on Thursdays. And so, when it runs from nine to ten, I can get to class late and it's okay. So, if I'm the only person in line that makes a comment, then I guess you should do what you want, but.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We, some of us were struggling to get here at nine. Mr. Keith? Do you have a comment for us?
Your laptop is on.
I can't, wait a minute, I can't hear you. Well, he's not muted and we're not muted, so I don't know.
He is muted.
Well, now he is. Let me see. I don't know what's going on. And Owl is on and.
We'll try you again in a few minutes, Rusty.
Is the sound on the computer turned up?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the extent of my guesses here.
Jordan will come zip it down in a minute.
Okay.
But go ahead to the next thing.
Okay, the next thing is our minutes. Here she is.
We need our technical expert here.
Technical guilt, yeah. Ah, sorry, I just got rid of them again.
Okay. We have February sixth, which was a Tuesday, and February eighth, which was Thursday two weeks ago. Minutes to approve. What do we wish to do with these two sets of minutes?
I'll move them.
Yeah, I'll second it if I find one.
Okay, and David, the only comment I have is I think Jordan missed that there were a couple strikeouts that she could have just deleted.
Okay, we can do that.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
I figured that was just.
An oversight, yeah.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
David aye.
And Judy aye. Both sets to six and two eight are approved and I'm gonna circle back to Rich Brand's question about the start time. I believe the Tuesday meeting may have been at ten AM and we discussed at the following meeting where we also made it ten AM that, oh, the Tuesday meeting was at three in the afternoon. Anyway, we did talk about, people kinda like it, the later time, but that's all there was to it.
And Judy Rusty just said, he's just listening.
Just listening, okay, thank you Rusty.
I'd like that chat feature, thanks Rusty.
Very good. We'll figure it out someday. We have a manifest, I think it's, Ben has looked at it, David has looked at it. I have not signed it, but I will sign it by the end of the meeting.
It's fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars and eighteen cents.
Thank you. And then, we move on to something that's really exciting. And that is discussing Little Town Meeting. I was wondering, there are quite a bit of zoning issues on the upcoming town meeting warrant. Should we invite our zoning administrator to be present in case there are questions? In which case, we should instruct him to schedule his day such that he's just on his regular.
Well, somebody from the planning board should certainly be there to speak to them.
Okay, well, somebody needs to speak to these articles because this is the only chance people have.
Right, and I suspect it's up to the board to ask who they think should go unless, unless you wanna ask the planning board who they think should go.
Well, why don't you go through the background of the planning board? We were always there.
Maybe they have a member that's planning ongoing or maybe you guys want David to go, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, I'm going anyways because I'm a candidate, I guess.
Yeah, it would, I would like to see either planning board or David. How about if after this meeting I speak with David and we'll ask him if he can touch base with the chair?
Should ask the chair of the planning board, that's really the right person.
Mister Stafford.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want me to email him or do you want?
Dina, that'd be great.
He may be fine to be there anyways.
Yeah.
Often is, but that clears up that. Then, David Kahn will be there because he is a candidate. Thank you, David.
He'll be there because he has to.
Well, he does have to, but I think it's good courtesy.
It's better.
And the only, for town meeting, and we will do this next, we assign different warrant articles for each of us to speak to. But at Little Town Meeting, usually there are more general questions. And kind of as a follow-up to the budget committee, we do, we have received some information on, somebody wanted to know what was in the bridge fund. And right now, it's four hundred and eighty-nine thousand and change and we're taking money out of the bridge fund for the bridge warrant article. So, the operating budget increase is two point two percent. The, the increase in the two capital reserve funds was another kind of discussed item. It's up twenty thousand dollars, which is five point one percent increase. And we made the comment that we would, and we'll probably make it at Little Town Meeting and Town Meeting. That'll probably go up next year because we do know that some of those funds need to be increased. What else was there, Dina?
There was a question about adding money to the capital reserve fund.
Oh, yes.
The bridge capital reserve fund. And that person has spoken to Kevin. And so, in the meantime, I had already answered it.
Yep.
In the fact that because it's not one of the capital reserve funds listed on the posted and warranted material, no, you cannot add to it. Can't add to any fund, other than what's listed there.
They could increase funding on the ones that we are adding to.
Correct.
But not a new one that we haven't added.
You can't introduce a new one. And I checked with the DRA. I have a written little, you know, answer from her saying, nope, you can't do that. So, you know, I'll be able to give that to Kevin today.
And then, just so folks know, because there will probably be discussion at Little Town Meeting, our warrant article, I believe it's twelve, where we talk about getting funds to remove material from a property. There were questions about the status of those two properties and we know that each of them, one in two thousand five and one in two thousand six were mortgaged. We don't have information on the mortgage status at this time. It's not really available to the public. And Dorchester Road has no tax leads at this time. The Buspon Road property does have tax leads. So, that's, those were questions that came up that we might wanna remember the answers to. They'll probably come up again.
Yeah.
What else for Little Town Meeting? We should, I suppose, all be there?
Could I go back to the capital reserve fund? I get that if it's not listed, it can't be modified. Do you know the answer or the question I'm sure will come up? Had it come up that XYZ Capital Reserve Fund would have zero dollars added to it? Is that something that could be done? And then, would that enable people from the floor?
All I have is my intuition.
Yeah.
I don't think so, because that sort of circumvents the essence of, it's a line item with an amount.
Yep.
The amounts can be changed.
Can I clarify what you're asking? What do you mean?
So, so, the bridge capital reserve fund is, I believe, not listed in the town warrant this year.
Correct.
Yes, and so, had it been listed with an amount, an increase of zero dollars,
I don't believe so.
Would that have been legal and then would the, would people from the floor be able to say, geez, I really would like to put fifty thousand dollars in it?
Yep, I think it would have had to have been listed with some amount. That's purely about instinct.
Is that, I mean, I think that question will come up. That'd be great to know and answer when it rolls around.
Because, see, the idea of posting a warrant is so that everybody can know ahead of time what's coming up. And if you have bridge fund zero, well, that's not.
They're not expecting that discussion.
That's not telling anybody that you're gonna put money in there. So, that's not, that's like a surprise. And that's how the warrant works. Now, in the regular budget, you can add to lines that are already there.
Yes.
Up to a certain amount.
Yes, exactly.
But you can't add money, like somebody couldn't add two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the budget to go into the bridge capital reserve fund.
Because it's not listed.
Because, yeah.
Correct, and it's not the select board's authority to move that money.
And you do have, you have to remember, you have a ten percent limit.
Oh, I know about the ten percent as well, right.
Right, so.
What is that in the tree?
That's to the, the budget committee's recommended budget, which is the warrant. You cannot exceed from the floor at the meeting, ten percent over that. So, people could add to each line.
So, you couldn't list, list everything with a hundred dollars in it.
Right.
In order to just get it on the, so that people could modify it if they wanted to.
Right, correct.
Because then they'd only be able to add ten dollars.
Right.
Right, yeah. So, you know, these are pretty hefty budgets.
The reality is, next year, we can add to any of those.
Right, right.
Well, that's, yeah, that's the, the select board's job, is to decide which capital reserve funds needs money.
And that's where we said that we think we will be focusing because of probably the bridge, because there are the bridges which we know that we repair.
Oh, yes, yes.
I will tell you that every year, not every year, but other years we have had, put money in, spend money out.
Yes.
And the DRA asks me the same question. Why are you putting money in, raising taxes, and spending from the same capital reserve fund? That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're ready.
We have done that, but.
So, what would they have us do? They would like us to do?
Well, you spend from it one year and then, you know, then the next year, you instead of putting fifty, you put a hundred in.
Yeah, which is what, I don't know a specific number, but I'm guessing it would draw down the bridge capital fund if that passes, that next year it will be on the list along with some equipment.
So, I know about the Edgeo Bridge. Is there other, are there other bridges in town that need attention?
Yes.
Which ones?
Flint Hill Road.
Flint Hill.
High Bridge.
High Bridge.
Wait, wait, so Flint Hill Road.
But, you know, the reality about these, if they actually fail, the downtime wouldn't be any different than doing the repair.
So, it's just a culvert, basically?
It's a culvert, it's a culvert.
Except for High Bridge.
Well, High Bridge is kind of a culvert.
It's kind of a culvert, but not really.
It's a half out, dirt off top.
It's, yeah, and trees growing. But yeah, there's three bridges that were on the prioritized list to come first.
One's on Pinnacle.
And, yes, yes, and that. And we had a, you know, report done out of the fourteen bridges. Now, they're all mostly listed as red, you know, not red listed or whatever you wanna call it. But, but that's mostly because of the width.
What does that mean?
A lot of that means that you need to address, you're supposed to address them. The state says, oh, they don't meet our criteria. And the reason why most of them don't meet the criteria, criteria, is the width.
They're too narrow?
Because they're, right, and we're not gonna change that. I mean, no matter what we do to Hughes Road, Hughes, Hughes.
Brookbridge.
Thank you, Brookbridge, it's never gonna be at to state standards because it's not wide enough for them. But it's in perfectly good shape.
Okay, so, other thoughts on Little Town Meeting, starting at six thirty?
Six thirty, and the board doesn't sit up front of the table. You just sit in the audience because it's not really your meeting.
Kevin, I believe our outgoing moderator has agreed to moderate. And it's a, a shipment who's running for the position, six thirty to eight thirty, and it's.
What's the date?
Tuesday.
Fifth, I think it is.
March fifth?
It's the Tuesday before town meeting, so I think it's the fifth. I just have to look it up.
February, March fifth, and town meeting is March twelfth.
And where is it? Is it the?
It's at the school, the community room slash gymnasium.
And usually, we just pull the bleachers around and Kevin has a little podium.
Yeah, we do sometimes set up chairs.
It's very simple.
Kevin will, yeah, yeah.
So, because you don't have to set up a podium boost and all that stuff.
So, and our next item on our agenda is to go through the warrant and assign people to be versed in the items and speak to them. And you're welcome to do it in that order also at Little Town Meeting. So, go away, thank you. That's, and there will be people, I'm sure, from the school. We will be discussing the school budget and the school. Thank you. We make a good team.
That's right.
And the school bond. Okay. So, the warrant articles, the zoning articles, Dina is gonna send a note to the chair of the planning board. Then we go to the town operating budget, Article Three. I'm happy to take that if you would like. There should be a warrant in the paper by now.
We'll send it out with the draft.
Yeah. And then we have the capital reserve funds. Would either of you like to speak to that or do you wish me to speak to that?
Judy, there you go. They're being awfully quiet.
They are being awfully quiet. Being quiet does not get you overlooked. Okay, the Edgeo Bridge. How do you feel about that, Ben?
I agree with you.
Excellent. And the block grant, that's pretty standard. How about that, Ben? You wanna take that one too? Not any further?
Yeah, that's an easy one. I'm sorry, I do not have the warrants.
Okay.
The warrant?
How are you?
Wait, I think you're looking, yeah.
No, that's a.
No, that's a legal document. Hey, Jordan, can you bring down a warrant, please?
Look, look, in there, you've got two minutes.
Usually, under minutes and then that.
And then that should be there.
Under minutes and then the next document.
Oh, yeah, here.
Never mind, Jordan, I got it.
Okay, so on page, we just went to page four and five, the operating budget and capital reserves, I will take that. And even though I may be moving the article, speaking to it, you guys are always welcome to jump in at any time. Ben has agreed to do the repairs to the Edgeo Bridge and the block grant, that's on page six. The next two are withdrawals from the public works. One is the public works facility capital reserve fund and the other is the vehicle capital reserve fund. David, would you care to speak to those?
Sure, I mean, there's nothing really to say.
They're pretty straightforward, yeah.
You just gotta move it, so.
Yeah.
So, those are articles.
Seven and eight. And then we've got Article Nine, which, this is a new one, may get some discussion. The heavy equipment capital reserve fund to purchase a backhoe. Ben, you seem to have a handle on that. Do you feel like you could speak to that one?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna speak as I always do.
Well, and if there's specific questions about it, Scotty will be there too, so.
Yeah.
No, it's not a problem. That's a simple one. It makes sense, be able to drive to the problem and fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah, without telling.
But you know that there'll be a couple of naysayers saying, you know, oh, it's just more equipment.
Maybe not this year, you know? One of the big naysayers is not gonna be there anymore.
Then we have the discontinuance of the Class Five section between Shu Strath and Maple Lane, Article Ten, and Article Eleven to reclassify. David, would you be comfortable?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it during town vote.
Excellent.
Well, and you may find the only thing with that is that somebody moves to address eleven before ten.
Yep.
Be fine.
And they might. That's exactly right.
That's right, they're welcome to do that.
That's why you're doing this, because it's up to them.
We want the town to make that decision. And then we've got Article Twelve. Dina, would you like to keep ours?
Sure, yeah. I knew you were gonna say that, no.
You want me to take that one?
Yes.
Are you comfortable taking that one?
Sure.
I would love that.
Yeah, if I moved an article, people would be like, why is she moving an article? She never does that. No, I don't, don't want to.
And we've got the Independence Day celebration, the milfoils. All the rest are pretty standard. I'm happy to do Independence Day.
Generally speaking, maybe somebody from.
I, I will find somebody for those.
You will, okay.
The other ones, I mean, some of these other ones, I find some people to move. But you guys are fine with that, but once you start after twelve, I'll just find somebody to move the rest of them, wouldn't you?
Well, except for Article Eighteen, right? I mean, the.
Yes.
Community power radiation.
I would find somebody from that. I would, I would probably ask James Graham to stand up and do that, or Jim Norris. That's what I usually do.
Yeah.
I find people to.
If, if we were, if someone were to ask the board, well, I don't think they will because they're gonna, and they're gonna be people from.
I definitely won't be able to, it's too complicated for me.
You know what, and in the past, I will say now that my brain is thinking about town meeting, I usually find people to read, to move all the articles. But then there's an assigned select board member.
Right.
To discuss it and answer questions. I don't know why, last night.
Well, because these, the ones in the beginning really are pertinent to the board.
Yep, number one, three, and four.
And five.
And the Edgeo Bridge, five.
And then the ten, eleven, and twelve. And then, yeah, after that, they are really.
So, let's mark that.
So, we'll mark.
Ten, eleven, and twelve, we'll leave, and then the first whatever's in there.
Yeah. Okay, and the community power. We won't look to Ben, but I think if, if it comes up, the thing that this, any one of us should just say is that, again, we felt
We can check in.
People spent a lot of time putting this together and it was up to the community to take a vote. We had concerns.
I mean, you know, I mean, I'm sure Jim or someone will explain what this is and they've already got a bunch of information.
They have done, and I believe they're gonna have some handouts, but I'm not sure where they would be located.
And you know, generally, Kevin, like whoever, whoever I find to do the Independence Day, Kevin, because he knows.
Yes, he explains it.
And Mark's around too, he'll know. But he just says, you know, this is an in and an out and, you know, you're not raising any money and.
Yep.
And then if there's questions, you know, whoever needs to answer.
So, I'm gonna have a question for Kevin when he comes about the handouts on Article Eighteen. So, we all know about that. Because the question was asked, if handouts would be permissible. Somehow, I think it's no.
Yeah, it's usually no. You can set, you can set something outside the gym or something.
Or, or you can do, even along the edge of the gym, you can do a table. Okay, so just, guys, you know, think about what you're gonna be maybe answering questions to for those things. Mister Kahn, would you like to report about the Medical Resource Hospital agreement with Barry Hitchcock Memorial Hospital?
Yeah, sure.
For town of line.
I spoke with, finally, after a three-week game of phone tabs, was able to speak to the representative from, from Dartmouth Hitchcock and expressed our concerns and he, what he said was, you know, essentially what Dina had been telling us, like, look, we have these agreements with everybody. We're not very susceptible to many of them and we're certainly not very interested in taking on any additional liability. And I said, well, here are the concerns that we have. One, we don't understand why terminating the agreement would require your permission. And if it does require your permission, you should have to give that permission without, you shouldn't be able to unreasonably withhold giving permission for us if we had an alternative that we wanted to pursue. Or we just decide to stop doing this, for example. And then the other thing I, I asked him about was the indemnity provision that was just one-sided, not symmetrical. And that has been objected to by our insurance carrier and by our attorneys and by me, and so. Anyways, after talking to him a while, I said, well, look, how about if I modify the agreement so that we address our concerns? I'll do the modifications as light-handedly as possible and you can just run it up the flagpole at Dartmouth Hitchcock. You can take it to your legal department and show them and see if they're okay with it, then we're good. And if not, then we'll see what we have to do from there. And he said, well, the legal department here takes a long time to review stuff, but if you wanna send me a markup agreement, I'll, I'll do that. I'll, I'll see if they'll accept the changes. So, I took it, I, I went through and modified the agreement to reflect just the most pressing concerns that were with it. With Dina, we sent that to Naomi Butterfield at Mitchell Municipal to review. She had one concern about one of the comments that I, one of the changes I had made and I think her concern was the indemnification provision has a, has some language that says it'd be identified to the full extent permitted under law, including reasonable attorney and other professional fee, other similar professional fees. Naomi's concern was, I'm not sure if Primex covers attorney's, attorney's fees. You might wanna take that out. So, Dina offered to check with Primex to see what their view on this was. I'd rather keep it in if we can because I think it makes it more palatable to Dartmouth Hitchcock and less likely that they'll reject it. But, you know, I'm not gonna override the, our counsel's advice on that unless Primex tells us it's okay.
And I haven't heard from them yet. I sent it out, but I haven't heard back.
He was checking and then, once we get that, that final little detail worked out, then subject to you guys being okay with the changes, the next step would be to send the red line to, back to, to Dartmouth Hitchcock, to Tom Trimenko and have him run it up there, see if Dartmouth will accept it. They may, they may not, I'm hard to say, but.
I, I read through it. It sure looked reasonable to me, pretty standard stuff.
Seems reasonable to me too, but, you know, they may, they may in fact just say, we're not making any changes ever period. We'll, we'll have to see. But, but let's see and then we can go from there. But that may take a while, at least that's what he said. That's what Mr. Trimenko said, was that they were real quick about turning things around. But that's okay. You know, at least then the ball's in their court and, and not in ours.
Okay, that sounds really good. So, we'll wait to hear from Primex and then take the next step.
In the interest of getting this thing turned around. In the interest of getting this thing turned around, could I get the, do you think it's okay? Would you guys be comfortable voting to approve the agreement as modified, subject to that little detail getting worked out about the insurance, uh, coverage of attorney's fees? And that way, once we hear back from Primex, I can just send the agreement back to Darby Hitchcock and not wait till the next meeting to do so?
Well, it doesn't take us a long response.
Well, I'm happy to.
Two weeks, you'd have to wait two weeks.
I'm happy to go ahead and move that, uh, subject to the insurance details.
You're not going to air back until, so.
So, you, are you happy? Will you second that?
We'll respond as quick as we can.
But are you happy to say that what we have now, you are in agreement with, if we can get that more detail worked out?
Yeah.
Okay. So.
I, you know, the reality is, we probably have to eat, but we have a warrant, maybe.
Yeah, we'll see. Okay, so, I moved, Ben seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Ren aye.
Kevin aye.
And Judy aye, so it's approved, subject to.
And, um, Dina, soon as we hear back from Primex, we can finalize the red line and just send it to them.
And, and then, yeah, we'll see how long that takes. Mark it down.
But that's fine, you know, if we never hear back, that's fine, because.
We've done due diligence and.
And, uh, I think there's a pretty good argument that the prior agreement that they believe we are subject to is not binding on town.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, so, that is this pile of paperwork. That really well done, thank you so much for that. We have current use acreage change. We voted at the last meeting to approve this change in current use acreage and to not assess the land use change tax.
Because it was an error, correct?
It was an error created actually by a mapper, not the property owners themselves. So, um, we just need to sign that form if you guys are comfortable with what we voted.
Yes, and as you know, I checked, and it is legal, yeah.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, I believe the wording was that, uh,
We can obey whatever the heck we want.
It's not going to be any tax.
That's right.
It's right. I think it must have been at the end of the day. It was the end of the day when that message came through.
Yeah, it was.
And, let's see, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make a comment. Earlier in the week, Dina contacted me, the school had contacted her. They were going to do a mailing about their bond vote, and they wanted to use the town's Indisha stamp for both mailing. And Dina and I talked about this, we both have the same recollection that this has come up before. And the town and the school are different political entities, and we try very hard not to have a crossover, even though we're all the same taxpayers. So, it was our sense that, uh, this can't be done, and.
Fiscal and, uh, fiscal, right?
Well, that's true, and fiscal, yes, thank you. So, I just wanted to let you know that I told her to go ahead and contact the school and regretfully decline the disciples.
Right, we thought that would get the whole.
Yeah.
Post efficiency of it, but.
Anyway, so that's just reporting on that, and I think we are ready for some non-public sessions. And I think that you might make your meeting halfway through for your class.
Turns out, it's canceled because of school vacation this week.
And you'll have, yeah, you'll have your non-public, and then after that, later comes Kevin.
Right, Kevin, our town moderator, thank you. And the, hopefully to be voted in, Mark Schiffman, town moderator, will be joining us later. If the board has, um, recessed the meeting, I will be staying behind, basically just to update them on what we did about the warrant.
Right, so this will simply be a discussion of, with Kevin about the details of.
The details of running the meeting and who's going to speak to what. And if we think there's going to be a witness anywhere.
Good, thank you.